Good morning. It's Wednesday, September 17th, 2014, 9 o'clock. And we're in Senator Hearing Room in Cordell Square, 555 Court Street in Salem for a week, the Board of Commissioners meeting. We start the meeting with a pledge of allegiance. Please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item is always public comment. No one has signed up this morning, so we'll move right ahead to the consent calendar. Commissioner Carl- Cameron.
Mr. Chair, I'll move the consent calendar. First of all, on the calendar is OLCC application. Recommend approval. Running Deer Vineyards, Salem. Under Business Services, Human Resources, approve an order removing Amy Rose Fish as a voting management representative of the Health Insurance Study Committee and appointing Todd Merklin as voting management representative of HISC. Under Public Works, approve an order reappointing Zachary Dale, Dan Goffin, Mark Grenz, Douglas Kramer, and Richard Massey to the Marion Water Quality Advisory Committee to terms ending September 30th, 2018. Under Tax Collector, approve an order canceling uncollectible property taxes. Under the Treasurer, approve revised Administrative Policy Number 496, investment of public funds.
And I will second the motion.
All right, it's moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar this morning. Further discussion?
I'm just wondering who's uncollectible personal property tax does we have?
Oh, they're all in- they're all in a list.
I saw them.
Was your name on there?
I was looking for my name.
Yeah, there you go. All right, anything else? Hearing done, then I'll call a question. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes.
Let me just comment on it, though. I mean, the reasons that are listed are just location unknown, business closed. So, I mean, it's not like they're- they don't try to get before that, so.
All right.
It's kind of the last resort when we cancel them.
Just checking to make sure my name wasn't there.
No, you're not off the hook.
Our first action item this morning is under the Board of Commissioners. We consider approval of a restated intergovernmental agreement withdrawing Lynn County and Yamhill County from the Mid Valley Behavioral Care Network. And Gloria Roy, your name is on this. I hope you're ready to go.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, the Mid Valley Behavioral Care Network is a regional intergovernmental entity that was formed several years ago. It originally had five counties, Marion, Polk, Yamhill, Tillamook, and Lynn. It recently dropped down to four a year or so ago. And as the healthcare transformation continues and there's a little bit of more realignment with counties, this again is restructuring the Mid Valley Behavioral Care Network to just Marion and Polk Counties. So, this intergovernmental agreement sets out the new structure of the organization. It provides a role for the county administrators as well as the commissioners in terms of the organizational decision-making along with the executive director. The Mid Valley Behavioral Care Network is a standalone organization, and it's formed under the statutory authority in Chapter 190 of the Oregon Revised Statutes that allows governments to work together to perform common functions. If you have any particular questions about this, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Are there questions or comments?
I've just got comments, if I could. So, we all, as commissioners, serve on the Board of Directors of the Mid Valley Behavioral Care Network, and it is an organization that kind of, I call it like a great big insurance company for mental health services for people who are on the Oregon Health Plan. They've also done tremendous work in terms of sort of cutting-edge innovative strategies. For example, the ESA program.
Early assessment and-
Early assessment, right, and support. And now it's- it was- it used to be team, and now it's- I can't remember what the A stands for. I never can remember what the A stands for. But that started with a Robert Wood Johnson grant, and now is statewide to help young people who are experiencing psychosis manage their lives. And they oversee the acute care, hospitalization for people that go into crisis. So, it's done great work, and it's one of only two really remaining mental health organizations in the state of Oregon, Gobi being the second. So, when the coordinated care organizations were formed, as Gloria mentioned, Tillamook County immediately realigned with the North Coast in their alignment. Lynn and Yamhill have stayed on, but Lynn County will- is in a different coordinated care organization. They're down with Benton and Lincoln Counties in the Samaritan area. So, they have one small grant that they have in common with the larger organization right now. They've really since earlier this year, they haven't had much skin in the game, if you will. Yamhill County has actually formed its own coordinated care organization, and so they may actually contract with the Behavioral Care Network for some other services, but they'll be more in the role of a contractor rather than as a full member, which then just leaves two organizations, I mean, two counties, Polk and Marion. Polk and Marion are both part of Willamette Valley Community Health Coordinated Care Organization. So, it's also caused some discussions in this agreement about who serves on the executive committee, because we've had one commissioner from each county serve on the executive committee. So, there were five, and then there were four, and now there would be two. So, the agreement anticipates to put a little bit more depth into the executive committee that the chief administrative officer, John Latimer, would serve on that executive committee, and the county administrator from Polk County, who's Greg Hansen currently, would serve on the executive committee as well. There was some discussion with Polk County about how you break ties. Our conversation around that is that if Polk and Marion can't agree on something, one person breaking a tie is not going to make a difference. I mean, we've got to agree if we're going to move forward. So, those types of provisions were debated and are incorporated into this agreement. The agreement was approved in concept at the full board meeting, which was last May, I believe. And then the attorneys, so BCN's attorney has reviewed it. They also hired outside counsel to help them, because this is more of a specialized type of document. So, they had attorneys from Softville Griggs, actually, that worked with them on the language for this. And once those tweaks came in, we got delegated permission from the board to approve it in its current form. Gloria reviewed it, found a couple other things that she had some questions about, but we're going to- they're not kill or die types of things, so we're going to hold those in abeyance for right now. And then after the organization forms, after January, I'm pretty sure that we'll be opening up this again for some more conversation. And at that time, we can bring in the technical changes that Gloria identified. So, I am supportive of us moving forward with the document in this format at this time.
All right, anything else? Perhaps then if you'd go ahead and make a motion.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I would move, then, Mr. Chair, that we approve the restated intergovernmental agreement for the mid-valley behavioral care network.
Second. Okay, it's moved and seconded to approve the restated agreement. Anything else? But thank you for going through that. This has always been a bit of a complicated, very important function of our roles. So, I hope that the good work that's been done in the past continues, and all the counties end up successful. Anything else? Call a question. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, that motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Gloria. Oh, they're already moved in. Our next is under Community Services. Consider approval of an order appointing Bry Taylor Campos as key volunteer for the Marion County Fair. Tamara Getch, Kathy Crocker, go ahead.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Tamara Getch, Director of Community Services Department. And I'm here today with Bry and Ms. Crocker. And we're here to present to you opportunity for the Fair Board member- Fair Board to have another key volunteer member to be appointed. If you recall, this position was initiated last year as an effort to gain capacity in the seven Fair Board member restrictions according to the bylaws and statute. And this body is responsible for coordinating the Marion County Fair. Seven members of a Fair Board is not nearly enough to coordinate all the activities necessary for it to come together smoothly. We count on a lot of volunteers during the event, but having more hands in the planning stages, which it is a practically a 12-month process of getting the community ready for this Marion County Fair each July. So, we've spoken with Bry, and she has been very interested. She not only comes to us with a lot of community experience, but she has fair experience, which makes her very valuable to the Fair Board. And she has interest in helping us to advance and improve different aspects of our fair. So, today, we're asking for your approval for her appointment as a key volunteer on the Fair Board. But I'd like to turn this over to Kathy and Bry to say thanks beyond me.
Okay. Good morning, Commissioners. Kathy Crocker, Volunteer Services. As you know, Tammy just mentioned it, the fair takes a lot of volunteers to pull off. And we're excited that Bry has agreed to help serve on this leadership. Tammy mentioned her fair experience, but she's also very involved at the chamber. She's a business owner, very well networked, and has a lot of great connections that I think will benefit this year-round planning. So, give you a chance to meet her and ask her any questions you'd like.
Hi.
Well, good morning, and thanks for stepping forward here. Now, they're saying a lot of experience, so let's go into that. What is your involvement with the fair or fairs been?
Well, being a past rodeo queen would take me to a lot of fairs. I'm actually-
What rodeo queen were? Let's get to this.
Let's get down. Well, let's see. Actually, you can't hold it against me. My first title was actually Queen of the Polk County Fair.
Uh-huh.
We won't give you a year. I do live in Marion County, obviously. But yes, I was a rodeo queen for many, many years. I was actually the past president of Miss Rodeo Oregon and helped run their pageant. Been involved with Marion County Fair for many years. As an exhibitor, my mother and I both liked to enter, well, I don't enter quilts, but quilts, jams, flowers, those type of things. So, we've been around the process, especially with the open class in the Jackman Long Building. And I would love to see that have a little bit more leadership and even more entries, of course. I think all of us know that the fair attendance has gone down. It's become a catch-22 of people who say there's not enough to see at the fair, and then people don't want to come and exhibit at the fair because they don't say there's enough attendance. So, that's one of the things I'd obviously really like to help with.
Great. Any other thoughts? Oh, John, why? You're going to work on pies? Is that your deal?
Oh.
Just let it go.
Oh, are you challenging me to a pie contest?
[laughing]
You're on.
I was, I got into being a judge at Marion County Fair because they were going to have pies. We've had two pies in the last five years, one of which I don't want to talk about, and the other one was marginal. But I think that somewhere, I mean, we've got more berries in this valley than just about anywhere else. We ought to have good pies. So, I hope you might jump in there.
I will make- I will make a note of pies, absolutely. But I think that's another thing, is I'm very involved with the Salem Chamber of Commerce. I've been an ambassador since 2007. I'm a past greeters chair, as well as I've sat on a bunch of committees there for the chamber. So, as far as being networked into more of the business community here in Salem, I definitely have my in there. But as we know, that doesn't always translate to pie entries in the fair.
I noticed.
But it is. It's, as Tamara said, it takes a lot of people to do this. And those of us who enter the fair, work on the fair, support the fair, we know all about it. And it's just not always as easy to get the word out to other people to get them to come. And sometimes it takes- takes a little bit more promotion, as well as maybe even some better prizes for those who bring their pies.
She's saying it's some your fault, you haven't, okay.
Sam.
Excuse me.
So, I want to thank you for stepping forward. And this idea actually was hatched at the volunteer recognition night that we had. Bry was there, and she came up to me after the meeting. She's full of enthusiasm. She has all these ideas. So, it was like, oh, she would make such a great key volunteer, and here she is. The key volunteer idea was actually brought forward by Pam Zalinski. They do this with the Ag Fest. They have a board, but they also have key volunteers. And as Tammy mentioned, the statute specifies that we have seven board members, and we can't- we can't create more than seven board members, because the statute says this is what a fair board has. But we can create people that are key volunteers. And so, we started that process earlier this year. So, this is our second official key volunteer. I would love to see it build, because what it means is that these folks come in, they bring their energy, they bring their ideas, they are responsible for an aspect of the fair. So, we spread out that responsibility. So, the Fair Board members have less on their plate, and we have, you know, more the merrier. And then when we do have a vacancy on the Fair Board, we have a group of people that are- have been working with the Fair Board, that are up to speed, that are part of the group, and they can just step forward, and we can fill those vacancies more easily than we have in the past. So, I just think all around, this is an absolutely wonderful idea. And I'm so glad that you took us up on the- on the offer to- to join the Fair Board this way. So, we will look forward to working with you. Thank you.
All right. Anything?
I'm interested in the pie.
So, does that mean all of you are volunteering to judge the pie contest next year?
Well, they wouldn't let Sam judge pies, because he didn't have the right expertise.
Qualifications.
Right, yeah.
If I remember right-
It's a true story.
Let's get this story straight.
I'll tell it- I'll tell it one time. That's what they came with. They came and told me I wasn't qualified. I said, my goodness, look at me. What are you talking about?
So, it was cheesecake that they put in, right?
Yeah, I put it in. All right, I got to bring this meeting back into order. I need a motion to approve this person, this wonderful person, stepping forward and being part of our Marion County Fair.
Mr. Chair, with the challenge of the Salem Chamber entering the contest, I would move that we consider approval of an order appointing Bry Taylor Campos as a key volunteer for the Marion County Fair.
And I will second the motion.
All right, it's moved and seconded to approve the order appointing Bry Taylor Campos key volunteer. Anything else? Then all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And I hope it's a great year for you.
Thanks for your service.
Okay, now we got to get serious, it looks like. Juvenile. Consider approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Department of Human Services for $1,200,000 for Title IV E funding for qualifying services provided to youth at risk of being removed from their home. Chuck Seibran, go ahead, Chuck.
Good morning, Commissioners. Yes, as Chair Brantano said, my name's Chuck Seibran. I'm the deputy director with the Juvenile Department.
Chuck, could you pull that a little closer? I'm struggling a bit.
Okay, how's this?
Better.
Better, okay. And what we've embarked on is understanding the Title IV dollars and how they can assist in providing services for the Juvenile Department via the Title IV E. What is currently, we are providing general services that qualify for federal reimbursement through our probation department, as well as our shelter care, also known as Guaranteed Attendance Program. We about four to five months ago contracted with JBI, which is Justice Benefits Incorporated, to assist us with this process. And over the last six months, we have identified those services, how to code them, how to submit them. And we are ready to go to take that data, submit it to the federal government. What Department of Human Services will assist us in doing is, they are the sole provider of this billing and revenue process, is we send that data to JBI. They screen it, and they assist us with it. Once that occurs, it then goes to the Department of Human Services. They again screen it and then submit it for billing. And then the revenue passes back through the Department of Human Services and back to the Juvenile Department. It is identified for juvenile services, as well as assisting with foster care in a local area. This is targeted specifically to work with high-risk kids in the sense of them being removed from the home and placed in foster care, or with the state, or in any other state services. Marion County has a terrific record for a continuum of services, starting with our Family Support Program, all the way through our Detention Program and everything in between. This will provide us an opportunity to plug a few of those holes. We are specifically looking for what can we do between shelter care and detention, and possibly provide additional services to meet that need, to meet the needs of kids with mental health issues. So, specifically, this agreement, which is two years, we are asking for it to be retroactive to April 1st, as that's when we started to collect the data. And this, we anticipate starting to see revenue probably within the next six months. And then we can start to identify where those expenditures can take place.
All right, questions, comments? Commissioner Carlson.
Thank you, Chuck. So, the $1.2 million is kind of like what I call a credit limit, right? I mean, so this is in the budget. How long did you, I mean, when do you anticipate the dollars will, sorry, will actually start coming in? And will they come in quickly or over time? Is 1.2 million an outside number, or kind of where did you come up with that?
Well, actually, we didn't. It must have been through conversations with the Department of Human Services and JBI. We are anticipating a revenue projection from JBI in October or November, but we haven't received that. We have been told, Monoma County, it took one year of the process. So, I'm anticipating after January sometime receiving our first check. Other than that, it's over two years. So, are we looking at 600,000 per year? It's- and also, it's based on the kids that qualify. So, that will go up and down. And understanding the percentage of the kids that are submitted that actually do qualify, we don't have those numbers yet. So, this is a pretty arbitrary number. I anticipate next July having two quarters and a further understanding of what the- what the revenue will be.
If I could, so my guess is that then, as we're watching to see how these revenues come forward, we're going to be a bit cautious in terms of the expenditure side of it until we actually know what we're getting and not really putting, like, permanent employees on a revenue source that we're not quite sure.
I certainly think that's a wise approach, and possibly even setting aside the first couple of checks and putting those aside as a stakeholder, and then possibly- possibly using the supplemental process as we go into the next fiscal year.
But this is good news.
It's very good news. I think it's revenue that's much needed, that's going to be targeted specifically to providing resources that either locally or statewide we're short on, a continuum. Our focus is to work with kids in the community, keep them with their schools, keep them with their families, and address those issues here locally. And that- that takes revenue, and this is an opportunity to provide that.
Thank you.
Anything? All right.
Okay, so I would move approval of the intergovernmental agreement with the Department of Human Services for $1.2 million for Title IV E funding for qualifying services provided to youth at risk of being removed from their homes.
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the intergovernmental agreement with Department of Human Services for keeping youth at risk in their homes. Any further discussion? Hearing done. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Chuck.
Thank you. And I just want to let you know, I am also available to be a judge.
Oh, so, excuse me, do you have a specialty?
I like to have-
Yeah, you got to have real tools.
John, I'd have to give you training for pies, because you have to have special qualifications.
I can go through that with experience, of course.
Our next items, Public Works. Consider adoption of an ordinance amending Marion County Code, Chapter 845, noise code provisions by emergency procedure. Joe Fenimore, Kevin Schultz are here. But Gloria, just a question without warning. As I was looking at this this morning, it struck me, why don't we have a public hearing when we- when we consider this?
It's not required to have a public hearing when you adopt the ordinance. There are certain kinds of ordinances where either by our ordinance itself or otherwise, we have a statutory requirement for a public hearing. This isn't one of them. The public meeting process is designed to give notice of actions of the board or considering-
It's just that as I look at it, I don't know where in our process someone would have had an opportunity. I don't think anyone's here that wants to comment on it, so it isn't like that. But if there had been, I just would have known what to do. Anyway, let's go ahead. Joe?
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Joe Fenimore. This item before you is to consider an ordinance amending the noise code provisions found in Chapter 845 of Marion County Code. Under the code, certain sounds and sound levels are considered violations and subject to enforcement. The code includes an exemption in Section 845-080i that allows any noise, any level of noise that is made in conjunction with any permitted commercial use outside the Sagel River and Growth boundary is exempted from the enforcement of the code. In July 2014, the Board amended the noise code to remove the exemption for commercial uses inside the Sagel UGB, in part to be consistent with the city of Salem Code, and also to address noise complaints regarding loud music being played at night by permitted commercial uses in the UGB. The Board held a public hearing on that- on that matter, and at the hearing, a participating citizen asked the Board to consider similar changes to the code to address concerns of loud music being played at night outside the Sagel River and Growth boundary. Staff developed options for the Board to consider. At a meeting and management update on August 25th, the Board directed staff to develop an ordinance for it to consider to amend the code. The proposed ordinance would amend the exemption section 845-080i to remove the exemption for certain sounds. So, permitted commercial uses would still be exempt except for sounds created or produced by, it says loudspeakers, public address systems, radio, tape recorders, tape players, phonographs, compact disc players, television sets, stereos, including inside of a vehicle, musical instruments that are amplified or not, and other similar sound-producing devices. The Board has the option of approving the ordinance as prepared, approve an ordinance with modifications, or take no action at this time. And Kevin and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Commander Schultz, do you have anything you wanted to add here?
Yeah, Commissioner, Kevin Schultz, Operations Commander for the Sheriff's Office. Thank you for being here. Thank you for having me here this morning. But most of you know, when it comes to responding to enforcement and enforcing code-related violations, the Sheriff's Office has always took a proactive approach. We've always prided our office in being collaborative with the business establishments and the residents in our community. And we've always believed that there's always been common ground that we can work- work towards. And in many cases, during some of these violations, we actually act as facilitators. And we've had great results in that way. And as we move forward with a potential change in the ordinance, this just basically gives us another tool to where we absolutely, when we don't have voluntary compliance and collaboration and education has not worked, then we actually have an option to where previously, there's been cases where we actually haven't had that option. And as we provide services to the community, we have a philosophy in the Sheriff's Office, is we always want to be able to give our community members something. And I think this is just an extra tool in our toolbox that can help us effectively enforce noise issues that are egregious in the community. So.
All right, thank you. Do you have anything, Kevin? Commissioner?
So, I just want to follow up on Commissioner Brantano's original comments. So, I know when we met on August 25th, we talked about sending out a press release, and I saw that Jolene had done that, but I didn't ever see it actually printed in any of the newspapers. newspapers. So was there any outreach done to some of the affected businesses so that they know that this is coming? And did you get any kind of reaction response from that?
Yeah, I can't specifically say to, I know we've had some continued outreach to an incident that had been going on over the summer with a couple of establishments that we're all aware of, but to any other than, I can't say one way or the other.
Let me just ask, I don't know that we've ever done this, this is by emergency. And would this be a place where you might want to consider not declaring the emergency, put it off for 90 days to take effect, just to make sure that if somebody has comments, that they're able to enter into the record somewhere? And it would only be through public comment unless a hearing was actually set up? But at least it would give that opportunity, or perhaps something in the, could be mailed?
That is an option the Board has. Mr. Chair, I think the Board could consider this as a first reading of the ordinance. It would have to then come back for a second reading, I believe, two weeks from now. And then it would not take effect until 90 days.
I'm very much in favor, don't get me wrong, but I just feel process isn't quite what I was looking for.
All right, if I could add, I feel a little bit uncomfortable going out there and then saying, okay, the Board passed this. You know, I mean, I thought we talked about outreach at the meeting, so that's where I'm kind of surprised, yeah.
Go ahead.
You mentioned, Kevin, you mentioned that there are two establishments that there's an ongoing problem with, that you've been trying to work with, that this would impact?
Yeah, and we've had discussions and collaboration between Remy's nightclub and the Phoenix RV Park. It's my understanding, we've actually issued two citations to Remy's nightclub over the summer, since we've had a chance to discuss this earlier.
For that issue, I think we've already taken care of that, because it was within the urban growth boundary.
Right.
This extends it out further. Is there another establishment, I think the citizen that came and commented about some particular nightclub in the rural area.
Right.
Do we know what that?
Is that, is that reference to potentially the Hitching Post on Highway 99?
Right.
I've had a, I've had a chance to look at calls for service for 2013 and 2014, specifically to that address and location. And other than some criminal mischief-type activities, we have not responded to a noise-related complaint for, since 2012, to the Hitching Post. So I guess, Commissioner, the answer would be, in regards to noise-related issues, there hasn't seemed to be an issue that's risen to a complaint that's been called into the Sheriff's Office.
So if I may, Mr. Chair, we haven't had any noise complaints that we know of that this would apply to, other than a citizen who came before us and said that she had a problem with a particular place, but she hasn't called it in.
I might interrupt, but part of the reason we might not have any complaints is because, frankly, the county did nothing about it, had no tool to do anything about it in the past, so a little bit of frustration. And this ordinance would fill that gap, as Commander Schultz was saying, and give us that tool.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, my point going there was the fact that, would we really even be...
Nothing's pressing, perhaps?
Right, would we, by passing this, would we really be doing something that's going to hurt a business that's having a problem now, that they wouldn't be aware of? Just gives you in the future some tools, yeah, sorry.
Mr. Chair, I did verify with Sergeant Baldridge, they did contact the people at the Hitching Post about this change.
Oh, they did?
They did, yes, they did contact. I confirmed that with him last week before he was gone.
Oh, well, that's good information. Thank you.
But there could be other areas in the county that are, would be impacted. Gloria, were you going to say something?
Well, I think, though, that I asked that question when we had the management update about if there were others that were in, not in the...
Urban growth.
Urban growth boundary. And Sergeant Baldridge wasn't aware of any at the time, so couldn't identify.
I can think of establishments that could, over time, out scattered throughout the county, some commercial. But, so what do you want to do?
Well, I mean, if there are no imminent calls right now, I think passing it by taking out, off the emergency clause and just doing the 90 days would allow an opportunity for us to get, I'm concerned, I actually was going through my emails last night and, you know, like deleting all the ones that were done, and I came across the press release on the noise ordinance, and thought to myself, I have not seen that in the Statesman Journal, haven't seen it anywhere. So it might be useful for someone to actually contact, work with Jolene, and contact them, so that there's something that gets out in the, in the press, so people are at least aware of it, so we might be able to hear. I think it's just, the concern I have, and I'm very supportive of this, but it's sort of this concept that the Commissioners pass things in the dark of the night, you know, and then all of a sudden, people have to deal with it. And so that's the part where I'm thinking that maybe taking the emergency clause off, just doing the first reading, then the second reading, that gives a couple of weeks for some more outreach to occur, would be good. And then the 90 days part, if there's nothing imminent that's, that we're dealing with, and we're at the end of summer now, so it's probably not quite the same season, and it'll be in effect by the next spring, summer, there's no harm done there.
Commissioners, if I may, also, in regards to Commissioner Brantano's comment, I do believe there is some legitimacy to the perception that in the past, we have only been able to do so much, and maybe that has been the reason, maybe some calls have not risen to, you know, a call to dispatch for noise complaints, you know, in areas of the county. So I think there is some legitimacy to that perception.
All right, so perhaps the motion, just as Commissioner Carlson outlined, if you would, or do you have other comments, thoughts, go ahead?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, thank you. And I guess whatever staff recommends here, because I'm good with it, the way it came to us today, based on, there's not somebody out there that's, we're going to go club over the head with, that doesn't know about this tomorrow. So I'm good with the way the motion is today, but I'd like to know what staff thinks, what they would recommend. Would you rather see us wait, and, and, you know, enforcement? And is there any problems with us waiting?
In my, in my opinion, Commissioner, there is no problem in waiting whatsoever, you know. Like I said before, we pride ourselves on being collaborative with the community, and there is no issues pending. And if we need to wait a little bit longer to make sure we've done a really good job and due diligence in getting the message out, then we're all for that.
Good. So, Mr. Chair, I will, let's see, where am I here? So I'm going to, public hearing, where am I? Oh, Public Works. Consider the option of an ordinance amending the Marion County Code, Chapter 8.45, noise code provisions. And I think asking...
Removing the emergency procedure.
Removing the emergency and asking for a first reading by title only.
First reading by title only.
Does that make it all, Gloria?
So we just read it once, the chair reads by title only?
Right, that's, that's correct, because it's a, it's a, just the first reading. The second reading will come in a, when it comes back in a couple of weeks. The emergent procedure, you're just combining it into one, and that's why you're reading it by title twice.
I see.
All right, is there a second?
I will second the motion. I never knew that, that's interesting. We hardly ever do things except by emergency, so that explains why you...
So the motion is to approve this ordinance with a first reading. It's ordinance, Chapter 845, relating to noise, and by title only. Any further discussion? Can you call a question? All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, a motion passes, and I'll do that first reading now. This is an ordinance amending and updating the Marion County Code, Chapter 8.45, relating to noise. All right, we'll see it again in a couple of weeks. And I feel real good about that. There ought to be some opportunity for input, one way or another, before we just pass things. Thank you all.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, it is past 9:30, we have a public hearing scheduled at 9:30, and this is a hearing to consider Amendment 1 to the franchise agreement with Marion Resource Recovery Facility to extend the agreement until September 30th, 2017. Jeff Bickford from Environmental Service and Todd Irvine, Mid Valley Garbage and Recycling Association. Jeff, if you'd begin then?
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Jeff Bickford, Marion County Public Works. I'm here today to discuss the franchise agreement with the Marion Resource Recovery Facility. To give you a little background, first off, they began their operations and were franchised back in October of 1998, when they began their operation. Basically, the, what they do is select drop boxes of commercial industrial waste, is a, boxes essentially that are rich in recyclable material, are taken to the facility, where they're then gone through, and those recyclable materials are removed from that material, from the waste, and onto the appropriate markets. This helps to increase our recovery rates here in the county, and again, pull more recyclable materials. Just to give you a feel for the type or the quantity of material that they are pulling or processing, in 2013, they processed a little over 107,000 tons overall. Just note, typically, they get about 10,000 tons of material that comes directly from the Salem-Kaiser Transfer Station, and that's material that individuals may have dropped at the transfer station. If they look like they're rich in wood, cardboard, and other recyclable materials, they'll set those, they'll put that material in specific boxes, and then direct that over to the, to the material recovery facility. Looking at last year, they actually recovered almost 50%. Just wanted to get that out there, about 50% of the material that went through was actually pulled out for recovery. So again, it is significant. So their franchise agreement is set to expire on September 30th of this month. And working with Todd, we came to, we're looking to extend that agreement for three years. And really, the reason behind the three years is that traditionally, the dates, their end date has been tied to the date of our end date with Covanta, the Waste and Energy Facility. So if that date changes later, we would look at doing the same. By Marion County Code 8.05, to make an amendment to this franchise, we did have to hold a public hearing, which is why we're here today. So the staff is actually recommending the extension, three-year extension of this agreement. And I'd like to go ahead and let Todd talk a little bit about the facility and offer some other advice.
Thank you so much. For the record, my name is Todd Irvine again. I'm the General Manager with the Mid Valley Garbage and Recycling Association, located on 3680 Brook Lake Road in Salem. Thank you so much. It's been such an honor to actually, to provide this service here within the county. Again, I made the comment before that I've been involved in the solid waste and recycling industry for about 30 years now, mostly in the Portland area, and it's such a thrill to spend the last couple of years here in Marion County and be involved. Very robust system we have here. It's been very exciting to, to work at the material recovery facility. At that facility right now, we're currently diverting about 70,000 pounds a day out of the solid waste system. These are, again, that's material that would have ultimately gone, quite frankly, to a landfill because of the excess material already generated within the county and the burner's current capacity. So again, it's very exciting to be able to, to extract that type of material out of the waste stream and out of the landfills. And again, it's just a real thrill to be involved here in Marion County. And even just so much as yesterday, we were filming an Earthwise commercial out at the material recovery facility. And it was really interesting, I was talking to the gentleman from Compelled Media that was doing the slots. He said, well, why would you want to be involved with the Earthwise program? And my question was, why wouldn't you? Again, you know, we live and walk and talk, you know, the sustainable, and we want a sustainable environment, and looking forward to the future of our future generations, you know, that our children and grandchildren can work, live, and play in as well. So again, just, it's just been a real honor, that's all I want to say.
All right, questions, comments? There's nobody signed up to speak one way or another? Go ahead.
A couple of questions. So this is the MRF that they keep talking about?
This is, this is the infamous, yes, lingo. The Material Recovery Facility, the MRF. It's not a little blue guy running around.
Right. So what are the, so the contract is actually with the Facility Inc., so there must be a separate legal structure that, so you're saying you operate it, but you're part of the association, and then, does Gart and Services have a role in it? That's the other question.
No, Gart and Services does not have a role in this. This is actually owned by the Consortium of Haulers here, and we actually report all of our revenues and the likes, a tonnage, all that information to the county on an annual basis as well, so they get all that reported. But it is actually, it's a privately owned facility, and it's owned by the Consortium of Haulers here in the county.
And then you hire your own employees?
Yes, and actually, that's correct. That is correct, we do hire our own employees.
I interrupt you, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, no, that was mine.
What were you going to say, we're actually, what?
Oh, I was going to say, it was constructed back in 2000, and Chair Brantano was obviously a part of that. And it was constructed back in 2000, quite frankly, at the time when they were, again, looking at the excess material here in the county, and, you know, what, you know, how do we, what do we do with that? And again, that material had been flowing to the landfill, and the haulers had got together to, you know, we can do something here to, you know, that has a better environmental impact, and quite frankly, that's why it was, why it was constructed.
Very good, interesting, thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Maybe just as an education, love to come out and tour the facility, I haven't done that yet, but tell me about the revenue streams here. What, how do you, how do you fund this particular operation?
Well, first of all, Commissioner Cameron, we would love to have you out anytime. Would actually love to get you out and meet the group as well. The revenue stream is, basically, it's a, it's charged a tip fee. So for the solid waste that comes in, and what we target is really what we call the dry, commercial, industrial-type waste. So this is your drop box-type material. So your residential waste, your restaurant, the, well, your compact, your, I call it, our front-load trucks that go out there and end up the smaller containers, that material goes directly to Covanta and Burner Recovery. So this is really the non-putresible waste, food waste-containing type material. We charge the same tip fee as the county. So the facility opened, as Jeff mentioned, in 2000, so the fee that we charge mirrors the county's tip fee. So it's the exact same as at Covanta, and quite frankly, hasn't changed since 2000 either. So that's how, it's basically, it's a tip fee associated.
So, if I may, so Hauler brings in a load of construction material that's mostly wood or something, and then they're going to pay the same fee that they would have if, for the weight, if they were taking something to Covanta?
That is correct.
And then are you able to generate any type of revenue off of the recycled material?
That, it depends on the type of material. So for instance, wood, there is typically a tip fee for that, but it's lower than a tip fee at a landfill. We actually bought a wood grinder here about two years ago, a little over two years ago. So we're grinding the wood chips on-site, and so we're able to sell that for, for some revenue. But however, that's, again, by the time you look at your overall cost of grinding and the likes, it's, it's, there's, there's not a whole lot of revenue associated with that. Now, if you pull something like metal out of that, there is revenue. So scrap metal, that's where you get, but again, the lion's share of what we pull out, about 17% of the incoming waste stream currently is wood. So that's the lion's share of what we pull out. A couple percent, about 2.5% is ferrous metal. Then we pull out concrete, other items can be ground back up to aggregate. And then, one of the things that we also do there, that really provides assistance for the county in Covanta as well, is we pull out the gypsum sheet rock. So the residual then would end up going over to Covanta in need, and if they have an overflow, then it goes directly to the landfill. But one of the things we do remove again is the gypsum, which does cause emissions issues or some cleaning issues for Covanta as well.
Thank you.
So to answer your question, there's, how do you get some, part of it has revenue, part of it is cost avoidance. So we don't have the disposal cost, obviously, for anything that we recover as well. So that would typically go to the landfill or to the burner, we don't have that, that disposal cost. That also helps, helps offset some of the labor costs to remove those materials.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And we'd love to have you out.
I will. I might say, Todd kind of already mentioned my involvement. Just for the record, I was, well, actually, we'll go further back than that. We started kind of the feasibility for a number of years with my own company, and then the collectors decided to go ahead and do it. About the time we sold it, so although I had an involvement and certainly care about it, I have no longer any involvement financially with the procedure. I think that's a disclosure. Pretty happy with them. All right, anything else? So...
Mr. Chair, and before I make the motion, I would point out that we... Well, Mr. Chair, and before I make the motion, I would point out that we, in addition to the revenues you talked about, the county's going to be paying, right, $544,000, is that correct?
Approximately.
Right, per year, right, for the waste. So there is county funds that supplement.
That is correct. It's basically the county pays the equivalent tip fee then for that material, and we actually have a reduced tip fee, it's lower than 54 and versus the 67.45 that's been charged. And just for the record, we do, those are typically higher graded loads too, so higher recovery, and just out of that material there, we generate anywhere between, we figure about 30,000 pounds a day just out of the material that is coming from the Salem Kaiser Transfer Station that would have been otherwise landfill or burned.
Right, thank you. So, Mr. Chair, I would move that we close the public hearing, and that we approve Amendment Number One to the franchise agreement with the Marion Resource Recovery Facility to extend the agreement until September 30th, 2017.
I'll second. Okay, it's moved second, and close the public hearing and extend the franchise agreement with Marion Resource Recovery to September 30th, 2017. Further discussion? If you don't hear any, all in favor, then say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, and thank you both.
Thank you.
Keep it up.
Thank you very much.
That is the end of our agenda essentially today, other than to read the places we'll be together in the coming week. Tomorrow morning at 8:00, we have a meeting with the City of Salem at Sassy Onion, 1244 State Street in Salem. On the 18th tomorrow, 11:45 to 1:30, a Travel Salem Marketing Exchange Luncheon. We'll Lamont Heritage Center, 1313 Mill Street, Southeast in Salem. Then we have an executive session, 4:00 to 4:45 pursuant to ORS 1926602H in Silverland Conference Room, 5th floor, 555 Court Street, Northeast in Salem. And going on at the same time, but ending later, Open House with the Marion Soil and Water Conservation District, 338 Hawthorne Avenue, Northeast in Salem. Monday, 8:30 to 9:00, Commissioners' Calendar Review, Silverland Conference Room, 5th floor, Courthouse Square Building. That's followed in the same location, from Management Update, 9:00 to 11:00, again, Silverland Conference Room. Then Monday, the 22nd, 11:00 to 12:00, a BOC, CAO meeting, executive session if needed pursuant to ORS 1926602A, B, F, and I, Silverland Conference Room, 5th floor, Courthouse Square. And Tuesday, 8:30 to 10:00, Community Corrections Board, Silverland Conference Room, 555 Court Street in Salem. And then 10:15 to 11:45, same location, Housing Authority Meeting. And also on Tuesday, the 23rd, from noon to 1:00, a Liberty House Champions for Children Luncheon. That's at the Salem Convention Center, 200 Commercial Street, Southeast in Salem. And that would be the last. We have is our next board meeting, which will be 9:00 Wednesday, the 24th, here in the Senator Hearing Room, 1st floor, Courthouse Square, 555 Court Street, Northeast in Salem. I think that covers anything? Any items we'd like to include?
The legislature's in town. Are you missing it? You feel a sense of loss?
My lips are sealed.
Okay.
Not going to comment.
I'm heading over there this afternoon. That's what made me think.
Say what issues are first on your plate?
Well, we are working on, right now, it's sort of the preview of the 2015 session, and so legislators are going to be putting their pre-session file bills in, committees are going to be putting committee bills in. The Association of Oregon Counties has been holding these public safety summits around the state, and one of the pieces of legislation that came out of that is on expanding resources for mental health, particularly to divert people out of the county jails. But we're meeting to try to make sure that we've got language in it that isn't going to collide with some of the other initiatives that have been going on with mental health. So that's kind of the big issue for me.
Did you see the email on the demunist bill?
I did.
Okay.
All right.
Lot of things going on.
Lot of things going on. Well, there's no use just sitting here, so let's call this meeting adjourned.